Not working.
Ready to say it?
Oh, it's not working too good.[12.38][12.38](laughter)
Gentlemen, ready?
We need to search some things around.[18.14][18.14](applause)
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order, January 8th, 2019, our first meeting of this year. I want to welcome everybody. I am Bill Pickens, Chairman of the County Commission. I hope everybody had a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and just a happy holiday season. We will begin our meeting by asking Pastor Dan Phillips to come forward for our imbrication, and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Father, as we stand in this room, it's first meeting of 2019, a brand-new Board of Commissioners, Father, there is something that is not brand-new. Father, may we all realize that we are always in your presence, that you see and hear not only every word that is spoken, but you understand every thought that we might have. So, Father, I ask for this commission, for everybody that is taking an active part in seeing our county grow and get better, may we realize, Father, that we don't always have the understanding and the wisdom to conduct the job and the stewardship that has been placed upon us. So, Father, may this commission and each and every one realize that they can ask of you for wisdom and guidance and understanding, and, Father, you will grant it and grant it liberally. So, Father, may everything that is done in these proceedings this morning and each time this board meets, may it be done knowing that these are stewards of that which you have entrusted into their care, into their administration, into their management, and, Father, may they realize that everything done and said has a direct impact on the lives of our county and our citizens. So, Father, we are before your presence, and we want to conduct business accordingly in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge the p-.
The p- flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips. Our first item of business is item number two, approval of the minutes for November 27, 2018, regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Goddard. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Minutes pass.[221.12][221.12](applause) We'll adjourn, or, excuse me, we will recess our regular Board of County Com- Commission meeting.[228.76][228.76](applause) Now convene the Port Authority meeting. Any items to come before the Port Authority today?
I have some comments and questions, if nobody has anything.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
So, at the last Port Authority meeting, we agreed on a contract to sell the spec building at a PRC way. One of the question I asked was whether or not we would see the contract after it was amended. I've not seen the contract after it was amended. Has the contract been executed?
County Administrator Suggs can, our legal counsel is not here today, so return to County Administrator Suggs, maybe you can answer that question.
I do not have a copy of an executed document back yet, so I'm not sure if it's been amended, accepted, or not yet at this point.
Has it been amended?
I have not amended the contract. I don't know if it's been amended by the legal department, but we'll, I'll find that information out for you.
Okay. In the second part of the meeting, when we go back into the B.O.C.C., one of the things I want to discuss is policies and procedures of how we do business. I don't think that the sell the business, the building was handled appropriately by this board. We don't have separate legal counsel. We don't have a separate manager. I know that all the commissioners were given a copy of the 67-1961 Legislative Act that enabled the Port District, and in reading it, it says that we are defined as a body politic and a body corporate, which means we are a separate entity. And one of the concerns that I have is that we have managed to shift so many things in and out of both boards that we've lost sight of what's the Port Authority's and what's the County Commission's responsibilities-wise, and the waters have become very muddy, to say the least. Mr. Administrator, I'd like to see if we can get a opinion from the State Attorney's Office on whether or not it's prudent for this board to co-mingle assets and liabilities of the Port Authority and the county, not just managerial staff and administration, but assets as well. Would that be a problem?
Not for me, no, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll reach out to whoever that the Commission thinks it's appropriate for us to reach out to. I don't know if the State Attorney's Office is the appropriate office, maybe the Attorney General's office, but we'll look at both.
I'm sorry, Attorney General's office. You're, I stand corrected. There you go.
Okay.
So, just, just for clarity, what I'm, what I'm asking is that they opine on whether or not the mixing of our physical assets, monetary assets, administration, and all that meets the legislative intent of the 67-1961.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, what we'll do then is we'll just go ahead and pull the official transcript of the, of the question, and I'll send that out to the, the appropriate authorities and see if we can get a response back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Wouldn't that request need a board action? And this board, and the Port Authority Board, wouldn't, would the request need a board action or not?
I think so.
I would think that it would have to be a motion by a Commissioner and second it and, and passed to, to, to do this in the name of the Port. We're in the Port Authority meeting to do it in the name of the Port. If you disagree, then that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't quite understand how the answer, or I don't know the answer to that with a legal attorney not being here.
Not going to say that we need to.
But we are going to hold a board, a port workshop next Tuesday. We can, we can, Mr. Manning should be back then.
Right, that's what I was understanding, we had a Port Authority workshop dedicated to the Port Authority, that we can discuss that then and, and maybe take care of that.
The anxiety that I have is that-
It'd only be a few days before we would be able to send it to Attorney General.
The anxiety that I have is that, number one, we don't, we're not voting on anything at workshops. We're asking for an Attorney General's opinion on how we should be conducting our business, so even going into a workshop, we may not be, have a really clear understanding of what we're supposed to be doing statutorily. So, the request is simple. It's, it's not going to cost the taxpayers a dime. We're just asking an opinion of the Attorney General to whether or not what has been done in the past is consistent with what the state legislature approved in 1967. I personally don't know that it would require a board action, a board approval, because all we're doing is asking for the opinion of the Attorney General.
Mr. Turner?
I understand, but if we just start as commissioners, a single commissioner starts asking for those kind of things without board approval, in my opinion, I think we're stepping outside of our, of our purview of what we should be doing of setting policy and letting staff carry it out. So, I don't know, when is our attorney due back?
I believe Mr. Manning is due back next week. As you all know, Mr. Manning had some medical surgery and is home recouping, so, you know, Godspeed to him for a full and complete recovery, but I think he'll be back next week.
Okay, I believe that I agree with Chairman Pickens that this should be taken to workshop, at the Port Authority workshop. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Harvey?
I was going to echo the same thoughts and, and maybe ask our comptroller, our clerk of the court, who is also our comptroller, to, maybe he could reach out to some counterparts throughout the state and maybe come to the workshop next week if time allows, and, you know, see what, see the separation, because if we just ask for Attorney General opinion, we got to give specifics of what we did, we're just wanting, in my opinion, Commissioner Rawls, what I'm hearing you say is you want guidelines of how to do business, and I think that could easily be taken care of next week at the workshop.
One of the questions that came up to me from the public was whether or not the Port Authority engaged in a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to act in, for the sale of that building. I've asked, and the answer has been no, there's nothing in writing between the Port Authority and the Chamber of Commerce, but the Chamber of Commerce represented the Port Authority. So, the question then goes to who gave the authority to the Chamber of Commerce to sell the building in the first place, and number two, act as the agent representing the seller and the buyer? And there's questions being raised right now as to whether or not it was even a legal transaction, whether or not it required a state, a real estate license in order for the Chamber to act in the capacity as a broker, because they literally brokered the deal. So, it's, it's one of these situations where, you know, the more we can get out and the more transparent we can be, the better off we're going to be, because right now, it looks like we, we as a board did not act in the best interest of the public, and we acted contrary to what the state legislature enacted. And we don't have separate counsel. One of the questions that I asked Mr. Manning at the meeting, and we can get the, pull the tape and get the transcript of it, was whether or not we should have our own attorney, and his answer was, I would recommend it. So, we don't have representation.
Well, as I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, that's something we should be talking about next week at the workshop.
I, I say, why wait?
And Mr. Smith was fixing to answer a question, so may I ask Mr. Smith to answer?
Yes.
Yes, I'd be happy to assist in that, and it's my experience with reviewing Attorney General opinions. You have to be very specific in what you ask him as it relates to them interpreting a particular statute or law. Now, they will also, when they're able to, they will give legislative intent along with their answer, but I think as Commissioner Rawls questioned, as he posed it at the beginning of this conversation, is going to be too broad for them to be able to say whether you did or didn't. They would want some specific either action that you took or didn't take, or a policy or position that you've taken, and ask them if that then matches up with the enabling legislation. So, probably the workshop would be the way to narrow the questions down, specifically that you want to have answered, and then send those. And it's always better that those go with the support of the acting body that is requesting that. So, if it's the Port Authority, then the Port Authority sends it; if it's the County Commission, then the County Commission sends it. But the more specific you can ask the question, the more likely you're going to get them to invest some time into doing that, because they typically will, if it is too broad of a question, they'll just send it back and say, you know, this is too broad, you got to work this back down until we can get to something, because they're going to look at a statute that says something that you've asked a question about. So, I do think that the question is appropriate. I'm not sure that it's refined enough for them from the experience I've seen with Attorney General opinions that they would answer it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor, sir.
Okay. Okay, so-
The question-
Hold on, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was going to say something. We're going to, I'm going to go ahead and say it now in front of everybody here. We're going to follow our order, okay? I am the chairman. I want you to recognize me. I'll recognize you if you want to speak. Does everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
I don't mind a general discussion, but we're going to have decorum, and we're going to do it the proper way. Everybody will have plenty of time to speak, okay? I'm not going to cut anybody off short. All right, Commissioner Rawls?
So, just so everyone's clear, there's a myriad of questions that will eventually come out of this, but the main question is whether or not we have been following the intent of the legislature in the way we have been managing the Port Authority, its assets, its liabilities. It's, I asked for a copy of our budget. I have not received one because there's not one for the Port Authority. And yet, if you go on our website, we have a, has everybody seen the Putnam County Port Authority website? And it says we have a budget, but when you click on it, it pulls up 2016, 2017. It does have the 67-1961 Legislative Act on there, but nothing else is current on it. And the concern that I have in having to answer to the public, and the only answer I can give them is it looks like my personal opinions were flying blind. We're doing things as they come up, we're reacting in the, you know, everything's in the past tense. And, you know, I stated before, I was highly offended by the fact that at 5:15 in the afternoon, we get a sales contract for a meeting that's going to take place the following morning at five minutes after nine. There was not enough notification to the public by the Port Authority to sell an asset for $750,000 that we hold on, on the books at 1.85 million. And then we threw in additional three and a half acres. So, I'm not sure that that was even legal, and the question has been raised by the public, and that's why I think you have, you have people present right now. I don't know why we have to take everything to a workshop. You know, we can, we're sitting here right now live and in person. Why waste the time?
You done?
I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
What we try to do to keep from wasting everybody's time is to do some of this in workshop. We don't, that's why we don't vote in workshop. We come back and do our business in front of the television where the people can see it and the people who come to Commission meetings, but it keeps us from spending all day just discussing issues, whatever they may be. We can, we can move forward, or we can still dwell upon things that have happened in the past, because this vote, this board voted to sell that building, and I'm sorry that you were offended by that vote, I am, but I feel it is legal. And the one thing that I've figured out is being a County Commissioner for a little over a year now, there's not a single deal that we can do that we're not going to offend someone. I don't want to offend anyone, I truly don't, but that deal's done. It was both voted on by the board, and so we need, like I told you before when we discussed port, I'm willing to listen to any suggestions that you have to move us forward in a, in a positive direction. I mean that, but I'm not willing personally to just keep dwelling on things that may have happened in the past. Let's find a starting point, my suggestion, find a starting point, and try to do things in a positive way. If we're not doing something right now, by whoever's opinion, this board or the Attorney General or whoever, then, okay, let's move forward in a positive direction and try to change it to, to do business better. But I just don't see where we need to keep dwelling on what's happened in the past, but instead trying to focus on what we're going to do in the future. It just muddies the water for me. I'm done, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Okay. I'm not upset with the vote. The vote is what it was. It was the fact that there was no notice given to the public. They had less than 24 hours' notice. A lot of people didn't even know that it was taking place because it was put out. When I asked Mr. Suggs if he thought that was appropriate, his answer to me was, sir, you made a motion that died due to lack of second, so in my opinion, your board doesn't have a problem with the way it did its business. Is that correct?
You're taking, Commissioner and Chairman, if I may, you know, that was a conversation that was had after the fact. The question was, it was basically that I think that we handled the business properly, and I said, based on policies and procedures of the board, yes.
If I could, but the conversation was a little longer than that, and what he said was, sir, I'll remind you, I think I'm correct in saying that you made a motion and it died due to lack of second. That tells me the board doesn't have a problem. So, procedurally, I think the Putnam County Port Authority needs some direction. We need to come up with policies and procedures as to how we're going to notify the public prior to any meetings. I personally, you know, we, we get our agenda late in the afternoon on Thursday. Why can't we get it a week in advance? Why does it come in Thursday, and then it gets amended on Friday or the following Monday? It just seems like we, we get the timelines crunched so tight and we're in such a hurry to do business that we may make a mistake. Like I said before, I think we made a mistake, but if we don't look at what we just did, going back three or four weeks ago, we're not going to realize the errors of our way. So, this conversation is about policies and procedures. I would like to make a motion that this board, the Putnam County Port Authority, be given its agenda at least seven days in advance as a, as a policy.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion, but here's, here's the thing. May I, may I have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Again, I presented policies and procedures back in February of 2016. We've, the attorney's not here today, so I'm not going to speak for him or nothing, but I think that this conversation really needs to be, Mr. Rawls, I'd like for you to come back next week at the workshop with a list of things that you want to see accomplished, and I think Mr. Turner said it properly. Then let's find the starting point and move forward. We've already asked our comptroller and our clerk of the court to do some research and be at that meeting. I think we can accomplish everything we want to accomplish at the meeting next Tuesday, and then start out the gate on a brand-new slate with policies and procedures, you know, that we can sit down and hash out and talk about. But I would like to see what you have written down, bring that to the table next Tuesday, and go from there. Okay? Mr. Chairman, I yield the floor, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
And I just want to reiterate that it, that no one Commissioner can do as they please. This is not king for a day. This is three commissioners voting one way or another to do something, so if they, if three commissioners vote to, to do something different, or change a policy, or move in a different direction, or whatever that case may be, then so be it. That's what we'll do.
That's right.
But, so I just, you know, I just don't want anybody to think that, that no matter what, no matter what's offered next week, that that's what we're going to do. I mean, we need to, like, discuss it. We can discuss it today, or we can discuss it at workshop that was set up at the request of a Commission. So, I'd like to go through the workshop before we go in much further here.
Commissioner Rawls?
So, just so we're clear, the workshop, will we be able to vote and take action, or are we going to go from workshop back to Commission meeting? Or Port Authority meeting in this case?
I just have a comment. I know that it's hard to do a meeting when we're going to get in discussions like this without legal counsel. I, I think we have taken action at a workshop, haven't we?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess we can, but I don't see why not bring it back to a County Commission meeting to where some people may have some comment, public comment also. You know, you talk about rushing things, talking about doing things behind closed doors, being, I hear transparency all the time. Why not be more trans, how can we be more transparent than have it at a workshop, which is open to the public, and then bring it back to a board meeting, which is open to the public? Got two chances there to, to have comments, so that's what I would prefer. But I guess the answer to your question, could we take action? I believe it's yes, isn't it?
Yes, sir. The Commission has taken action at workshops in the past, so you could. Mr. Chair, if I could, I want to more directly answer a question that was asked earlier about the contract. No, I have not seen an amended contract, and I have not received one back. I will get with the County Attorney and see if there has been an amendment done, and so now that there is, then we'll make sure that we forward a copy to the five Board of County Commissioners.
Port Authority Commissioners.
Port Authority, there you go. Port Authority Commissioners.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I'll hold them until we get to the workshop.
Okay, now we have a motion, and we have a second. Do we need to vote on this?
I'll withdraw the motion.
Withdrawn?
I'll withdraw my second, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, any other business to come before the Port Authority? Do we have minutes that we have to approve?
(inaudible).
Mr. Chairman, since we don't have them with us now, can we approve them at our next meeting?
Yeah, that's what I would think, so we don't have them. Okay, we'll approve the minutes at our next meeting. All right, any other further business to come before the Port Authority? Okay, I'll adjourn the Port Authority, and I'll reconvene our regular County Commission meeting. And next item is item number four, recognition. This is a special treat that we have for everybody today. We have Crystal Macasio with the Extension Agent in 4H, and she has a special group of people with her, the 4H Livestock Judging Team, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say Sharon Trine is also with us, Extension Agent with IFAS, and all this, thank you for all she does. So, anyway, Crystal, welcome, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good morning. I have the great pleasure of introducing and presenting to you this morning our Putnam County Livestock Judging Team that has been representing this county across the nation. As I call your names, if you'll please come forward. Team members include Abby Whittington.
Always got to be a first one, isn't it?
Clayton Brahman. Dathan Guthrie. Emily Lance. And Jarrett Kelly, who is unable to be here due to his college class commitments. And they are accompanied today by outstanding parents, but also two individuals that have given lots of time and energy. Their coach, Mr. Jerry Mullins Jr., please come up, and their co-leader, Mandy Guthrie. This entire team has put in countless hours, building their knowledge and skills, traveling everywhere it seems like for opportunities to evaluate livestock and compete. Their journey began as in preparation for their state contest that happens in April each year, and they, when they attended that competition, they placed high enough to represent the state of Florida at the American Royal in Kansas City. They were, they knew it would be a challenge, but they were up to the hard work and diligent about how they would have to prepare. So, after that state competition led them to attending clinics and camps in Georgia, Oklahoma. They competed in the Cimarron Classic in Oklahoma, the National Barrow Show judging contests in Minnesota, the ABGA contests in South Carolina, and numerous other in-state contesting clinics. I want to highlight a few of the, the contests that they went to out of state. They competed in the Big Three Contest in Oklahoma. Now, this has about 1,600 participants in this contest. Our team took first place in the beef category and eighth overall. They also had the second-high individual for the entire contest, contest with a perfect score in beef, in Dathan Guthrie. At the Georgia National Fair in the Peach State Contest, we had the second-high senior team, and Dathan placed the second-high junior individual, placing first in reasons in the swine division, and Clayton was the overall, 16th overall senior in that contest. Then the American Royal, the big deal, amongst the top teams across the nation that came forward, and our team placed eighth overall, with Emily placing 12th high individual and Abby 17th high individual. Livestock evaluation gives youth the opportunity to apply science-based skills while developing public speaking skills and sharpening skills in how to compare logically, decide independently, solve problems rationally, think critically, and communicate effectively. I proudly commend this entire team for all of the hard work and things they have accomplished, and give great thanks and recognition to their coach and their co-leader that have put in so much time to make it possible. Given the time and opportunity, and we did speak earlier about, we would love to, for one of our youth to come forward and give a set of reasons, and what that is essentially is their defense for placing a class the way they did. So, I'm going to call up Ms. Emily Lance.
I was hoping you'd do that. That's fun.
How are y'all?
Good.
Good morning.
I like the Hartford Heffers 3-2-4-1, and my top pair of the two heavy-feathered females, I sided with- I sided with the deeper-bodied, more maternal heifer to start. Three not only offers the breeding fundamentals of a structurally correct base and a bold ribbed design, being the deeper-ribbed, more capacious female who moves with more flex and reach when asked to lead, but she also is a more feminine, sweeter-fronted female who's more refined about her head and neck and more parallel in her lines. Now, I'll give credit where it's due. Two has leveled her top from shoulder to hip and longer from hooks to pins, but she simply gets overpowered in terms of overall width and dimension of center body, so I'll sort her second. Nevertheless, I'll side with two over four in my middle pair, as two certainly holds a paired advantage in terms of brood cow power, as she opens up with more natural curvature at the top of her ribbon, carries it through a border cage and into a deeper flank. She also combines this with being the more functional female who feels attracts with more ease and cushion. Now, don't get me wrong, four throws a nicer look when on profile as she blends smoother from her shoulder back, but that works to her disadvantage as it proves her to be the narrower-made, flatter-sided female, so I'll sort her third. Even still, I'll side with four over one in my concluding pairs. Four is the longer, cleaner-necked, heavier-muscled female who stands on a larger circumference of foot and bone. She also opens up with more substance behind her shoulders, carries it through a deeper body and into a stouter, square hip. Now, I can certainly appreciate one for being taller from hip to hock and hock to ground, but let's keep it simple. She's just the narrowst-made, shallow-spotted, frail-ass-boned female who would be the least valuable when put, when put into a production setting. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wish I could argue like that and say my point.
It is very impressive, and these kids can all stand up and, and thanks, uh, I know Jerry even takes phone calls from them at one point on a daily basis to, uh, to listen to them, give their sets of reasons and critique them and, and encourage them to, to make changes, to improve. So I want to congratulate our entire team and thank you for continuing to make us proud. And I did ask them to bring a few awards. If we could have a picture with commissioners, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, Crystal, I just have a, I'm sure that some of the commissioners have some comments, but, uh, I want to start first and we'll save Larry Harvey for, Commissioner Harvey for last, because I know he has some comments. I just want to thank you for, for what you do, Jerry and Mandy, uh, for all the efforts that you put in with these children, um, young people. And young people, uh, you represented Putnam County well. And, uh, the skills that y'all are learning and using, you'll carry those through the rest of your life and it will benefit you. And, uh, as this commissioner, I'm so very proud of this group. Commissioner Rawls?
I just want to say, this is the third time I've had the pleasure of, um, hearing you guys, and each time it truly is a pleasure. Um, y'all have come in front of our Rotary Group several times, and, um, when, when Jerry first started telling me what y'all go through and, uh, you, maybe y'all could, when y'all could take the mic and talk about you traveling, um, and what y'all do on the way up to these tournaments and how y'all prepare and, uh, had the countless hours that you put in, because I think it's really undersold.
Go ahead, Abby. Um, what, what you do to prepare, about what you do in prepare and each on your trips? What do you do as far as recent practice?
So whenever we go on a trip, we usually fly out, if we have like a big contest, something, we fly out a couple of days early, and Mr. Jerry takes months and months to prepare. Um, he calls farms and ranches all over wherever we're going, and we go practice there and have classes and meet new people. But while we're there, we usually take notes and stuff, and then on the way to the next farm or whenever we get back, we, what Emily just said earlier, oral reasons, we do those pretty heavy. That's a big part of our contest. Um, we do six sets of those at our big contest. So we had.
Ten classes?
We had ten classes in our big contest and then six sets of those reasons, so that's a pretty heavy one. Usually at our state contest, we only have eight and four sets of reasons. So we spend countless hours on all of our trips doing that and practicing and just kind of going through everything and talking about it just to get our minds set right for the contest. Yeah, side of the road, rest stops. We usually stop and practice while we're in the car. Ms. Mandy sometimes drives and Mr. Jerry listens to us. We usually just practice, 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 and it's a lot of work, but we have a lot of fun.
Well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I want to tell you, you guys are awesome. Uh, I've had the opportunity to see my daughter, her friends, uh, George Deloche, e-everyone that's been involved with it. My, my wife was heavily involved for a while, but you, you guys have done awesome. What you do with the animals and then get out there and the time you spend, it's incredible. And like, I have watched these, I call them kids, when, uh, you know, when they were coming up, how far they have advanced today. They are awesome adults today, but thank you.
Thank you. Want to, Commissioner Harvey?
It just pleases me, you know, y-you hear bad things in the world, but these are the good things that happen here. And Putnam County should be proud of you young people, and many more of you are out there. It's just not just the four of you. There's plenty of people out there that are, that have good leaders that come and volunteer countless hours and thank you, and drive and spend your own gas money and your own plane money. I, I know you do, and I appreciate it. And Abby, I saw you, you were born around, you were a baby when I met you, and, you know, to see you stand up and speak to the county commission as eloquently as you do, I can't even do that today. So, and, and I've seen all y'all give your arguments, and that's going to help you so much in life. You could become the president, the senators, and the future leaders that this country so desperately needs, and, and I just applaud you for the work you do. It's not just about animals. It's about how you handle yourself and how you project our community to the outside world. That's what's important, and you do a remarkable job. I was so glad you did that, because I was going to ask you if you would do that, because that just, again, if I could make that argument, I could be the president myself, but I, I can't argue like you. If I could reason like that, maybe I could get more done, but you do a good job. So thank you all, y'all, and thank you so much for everything. And I tell you what, I know Sharon, it starts with your, top of your team and works its way down. Y'all are servants to this community, and when you go to the fair and you go look at what y'all do, it, it's remarkable, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Turner?
I would like to echo the other commissioners on congratulating you on your many accolades and to also say that, uh, that I'm proud of you. I'm proud that you're from here. So thank you for coming today and nice to see you guys again.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one more question?
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Jerry, can you tell us how much it costs a year to fund this? And how they get that money? Little pitch for you?
Yeah, thank you. So we're self-funded and we do a lot of fundraising. All of you've been involved in several of the things that we've done, so thank you for that. You've been involved in a lot of activities. The community has really brought a tremendous amount of support to us. This past year, it's cost us thirty-eight thousand dollars to do what we needed to do, and it's supported by their family and their parents and the fundraising activities that they get involved with. And then also, we've got just, it's amazing, as small a county as we are, how many people come forward and really want to help.
That's right.
The community really pulled for this whole thing.
It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. That's, I would like to, uh, when we do the picture, I want to present everybody with a pin from Putnam County, so hopefully you'll wear it on your pail, um, when you represent Putnam County, as you, uh, have done so well this past year. So let's give them another hand.
We do, Jerry. Yes, sir. Yes, we do. All right, if I can have everybody look here just for a second? One, two, three. All right, I know we have a lot more cameras. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you so much.
Good news. That's the best part about these meetings.
Yeah, yeah, that was great. Okay, before we move to public comment, I'm going to deviate from our agenda just a little bit, and I'd like to, um, ask Press Tompkins to, uh, to come forward, um, and just tell us a little bit about the football game last night.
Mr. Chairman, look at his boots!
And, uh, I hope we can, I hope we can get a picture of those Clemson, uh, boots. Press is an alumni of Clemson University, and, uh, they, uh, took care of the Alabama-Clemson tide last night. Was it forty-one to sixteen?
Forty-four, sixteen.
Forty-four, sixteen, so anyway.
I'd like to request that he sing the school song.
Exactly.
I can't carry a tune of the bucket and the wheelbarrow. No, it was a heck of a game last night. I was very proud of our team. They showed up and they, they played one heck of a game, and hopefully our quarterback says he's going to stick around for three more championships, so, but.
Were you ever nervous?
Huh?
Were you ever nervous?
Lord, yes. I didn't go to sleep till two o'clock. No, it, it was a heck of a game, and, uh, I'm, I'm very proud of them. That's, I was at Clemson when we were two and nine and one and ten, three and eight, so this is a heck of a tribute for them to turn that program around like the way you have.
That's right.
Well, congratulations. So we're just going to put you on notice. This is two national championships in four years.
Three years.
Three years. If they win next year, we expect the fight's on, okay?
That's right.
Need to go home and start practice. So we're putting in a, matter of fact.
It'd take me a year of practice to get there, believe me.
You can recruit help too, if you need to.
Thank y'all very much. I really do appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, agenda number, uh, item number five is public comment. Uh, this is allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters of attention to the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters in which the board has received no prior information. Please limit your comments to three minutes. When you come to the podium, if you'll speak clearly, um, with your name and, and address. Our first, um, public comment is from James Lilly. Did he just walk outside?
No, he's right there.
Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I am James Lilly at seven-two-eight Call Farms Road, Florahome, and, um, uh, I just, I've been called before the special magistrate for our code enforcement division on case number two oh one eight zero zero four four five, and, um, I would just ask for a little extension of time on this particular case, uh, because, uh, I've been working with the USDA, uh, county engineers, agriculture engineers, and, uh, the civil engineers of USDA, and also with the, uh, uh, the, uh, St. John's River Water Management on this particular case also, and, uh, with, um, Molly Klempeter, who is a hydrologist, and also Amy Maxwell, who is an engineer, number three, with the, uh, St. John's Water Management. All I'm just asking for a little bit more, more time, if that's possible, and, uh, because I've been working with these contractors, and, um, one of the contractors that, that's working with me is the same aquatic control group, which is working on those canals now that you're cleaning out, but it'll be a hundred days before they get through with your job, and then I'm working with them after that job to, uh, to give me a bid on, on my job that we need to do on the drainage problems we're having, uh, in, in our area there and on my farm. And, uh, with the engineers for the USDA, because all this, the, the holidays that's came in Thanksgiving and Christmas, that, um, they were coming back in January to do a complete elevation, uh, on my farm, and, uh, give some recommendations of how to solve these water problems that we have in our area right there. And I believe if you give me a little bit more time on this and working with these people, we can solve this problem that we have. We bid also for the county, because that county road ditch is very deep, and we've discovered that through the, uh, uh, water management, uh, engineers, that there are some other options also that's came, uh, came to us after this, uh, special council, uh, uh, meeting. So all I'm asking is just to give a little bit more time on this. We're resolving these problems, but we want to do it correctly and, and efficiently and be good for the county and also for, for we farmers out there. So all we're asking, just to give us, uh, uh, if you can't make the decision today, I'm asking maybe you can refer to your workshop or the transportation workshop, uh, to we, if we can do this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lilly. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Lilly, I don't think this board has the ability to do that. The special magistrate, once a case reaches him, it goes from there to, uh, the circuit court for appeals. It doesn't come to us, so we don't have the authority to do what you're asking us to do today. I don't, without counsel here, I'm not sure that we can even ask, I mean, as a board, I guess we could ask the special magistrate to look at it again, but I'm not sure that even we can do that. I don't, I don't know that we have, and I don't want you to think that I'm not being sympathetic to your cause. I really am. I just don't thi, I think you're asking us to do something we cannot do by statute.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what else to say, Mr. Chairman, I.
I, I think you're correct. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Lilly, bef, when we talked in the hallway before the meeting and you voiced what you were going to speak about, I went to our planner, Mr. Brown, and asked him the same thing that Commissioner Turner had just voiced, and my understanding is we do not have that authority, and our attorney is not here to give us any, any pathway to success, although I feel your pain and I wish we can work that out. And, and I'm glad you're taking all the necessary steps to, to, for your farm and for that area out there, but right now, we cannot do that.
I see, okay.
And, uh, you know, now, hopefully in the future, maybe we, when our attorney gets back and we can find a pathway, we'll work on it at that point, or, or, you know, I'll, I'll be glad to meet with you and see what we can do, but right now, it's out of our hands, and I, I don't even know if I can meet with you about it. I'll have to seek legal counsel about that.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
I have a, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
I, I just want you to make sure that you understand, it's not that we're not sympathetic to what you're wanting, it's just we don't have the ability to do it.
Okay, I understand. Okay. I did not know this, so, uh, this is, uh, but it's good to be informed of this, so.
Commissioner Rawls?
If the special magistrate's penalties go into effect, um, is there a way to mitigate that if, if he has something in progress? I mean, we're, does anybody know what the rules are right now when, regarding that? Can we waive the, the fines if he, if he shows progress and he's making end roads to getting the, I got a head-shaking yes over there and a possibility here?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Turner, didn't mean to cut you off.
I believe from, uh, back when I served on the codes board and on the planning commission and now commissioner, we've several times someone has come before us with a reduction of, a request to reduce fines on an issue. I'm thinking that, that that's going to come to us. Mike, would you shake your head yes or no, or get, or come up here and answer these questions for us, please, sir? But I, I think we do have the ability to reduce fines at some point in the future if progress is being made and it's going in the right direction. I'm pretty sure he can also go back and, and request to go back before the special magistrate and explain some of this if things have changed since, since this, uh, case came before the magistrate, and, you know, I feel comfortable that, uh, And, you know, I feel comfortable that personally speaking, if he's making good progress and he's moving in the direction he needs to go, I wouldn't have any problem at all hearing, you know, hearing the reduction hearing, the reduction hearing when it comes before us.
Yeah, Commissioner Turner's correct. You could...our request for reduction will come before the board for any fees or penalties. Also, there could be a request back to the special magistrate for an extension. And I know that the special magistrate has granted those, not, you know, for sure, but in the past, there has been extensions as long as the applicant is moving in the proper direction. So that is the other option.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, who would refer that back to the magistrate? Would this board refer Mr. Lilly back, or would he request to go back before the special-
I think Mr. Lilly should request that.
Okay.
I would suggest that he contact Lisa Suarez first.
Okay.
And coordinate with her on making that request with the...to the special magistrate.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Administrator Suggs, do you have a comment?
Well, no, sir. Just, we talked about this briefly. There's a process in place that can take care of this. The process is Mr. Lilly needs to contact the code enforcement office, request to be heard by the special magistrate on a request for an extension of time. And then it will be up to the special magistrate if he would like to grant that extension. Then, once the process is complete, Mr. Lilly has come into compliance with the issues that Mr. Lilly was in front of the special magistrate for. There'll be an affidavit of compliance that will be issued at that time. Then, at that point, Mr. Lilly can then come back in front of the request, to come back in front of the board of county commissioners and plead his case on a rescension reduction of fine at that time. But it needs to come in compliance first and have an affidavit of compliance on file.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chair-
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, Ms. Cindy Locke.
Good morning.
Morning.
I wish I had something good to say, but I don't. My name is Cindy Locke, and I live at one-oh-nine Wadman Lane in Palaca, Florida. And I'm here to discuss the Magnolia Dunes PUD. I want y'all to know that being forced to tolerate a loud motorsports facility in a planned unit development and the owner's business model, which is to cram as many campers and people into events for profit with little regard to nearby residents or public safety, while violating conditions and use of the PUD without county enforcement, is not compatible. The county has been informed numerous times that GNCC motocross racing are held at Hogwaller since 2015. The next motocross race is scheduled in March, where hundreds of motorcycles will race on a dirt racing track with only a seventy-five-foot setback near residents. The county knows the PUD's conditions and uses do not allow motocross racing, and motorcycles are not a used vehicle, yet the races continues. The county is aware off-site parking on agricultural property not rezoned for commercial use is used to access this PUD, and that mud bogging is occurring outside the permitted areas by the state. All these violations increase noise and congestion that nearby residents are forced to contend with. What is the point of county government and what is the point of this PUD if it's not enforced? How can taxpayers resolve their issues under these conditions? The PUD was to be compatible to their surrounding residents. Compatibility is a state in which two things are able to exist or occur together without problems or conflict. Well, there is a problem and a conflict brought about by the owner-operator who ignores complying with what's allowed in the PUD and the county's lack of integrity to do anything about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Locke.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rawls?
Is there any compliance arm of local government that monitors the PUD, what they're doing on the property, when they're doing it, and how they're doing it?
I'm not aware of any notice of violation to this owner for any of those violations.
Is it possible they're not violating the PUD? Has anybody reviewed the PUD?
Motocross racing wasn't a compliance in the PUD. It wasn't advertised to the public as being an activity in the planned unit development. They know...they all know.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not read the PUD. I'm not aware of what it allows and doesn't allow.
Okay, well, you need to read it.
It just...logic dictates that there would be some sort of compliance arm that would be able to review what's going on there and draw a line in the sand and say they're in compliance or they're out of compliance. And then I don't know what kind of actions would be taken at that point. But is that what you're asking, is whether or not they're in compliance?
Well, motocross racing was not advertised to the public for an activity or a use condition in this planned unit development. It's a mud bogging ATV park in a trail riding park. Okay, that's what was advertised to us. So they've been motocross racing with motorcycles, and motorcycles is not a used vehicle in the PUD. The PUD clearly...you can just read it. It clearly states-
The PUD excludes motorcycles?
It excludes motorcycles and excludes motocross racing. It wasn't advertised for that.
Is that correct?
Is that correct?
Administrator Suggs, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I don't have the PUD in front of me to tell you what is or is not in a PUD. But I will tell you that we respond to all the phone calls and emails that we do receive from Ms. Locke. Those phone calls and emails are taken very serious. Staff looks into each one of the complaints. We meet with staff. If there is an issue, we contact the property owner of the PUD. And there has been amendments to the PUD and special use permits has been approved for these projects. So we do take this very serious, and there is an arm of the county that looks into that. That will be your planting and zoning department.
And what happens on our end or with what we're trying to resolve, our noise issues out there, is we bring these complaints to the county, the owner still is able to be non-compliant while he's operating until y'all resolve the issues. He doesn't come to the county and say, "I want a motocross race out there," and revises the PUD. He's already doing it. You see what I'm saying? We have to contend with all that noise until he revises it. It should be the other way around. He's supposed to be coming to the county, right, and asking or feeling out proper...isn't there a procedure if you wanna, you know, do something in your PUD that you're not allowed to do in it? You're supposed to come to the county and ask permission first. But this is what's going on.
I would think that...that would be the answer.
I mean...
Yes, sir. We respond to them, and when we look at them and we follow up on them and take the necessary action to make sure that the PUD stays in compliance.
So will he be sent a notice of violation for motocross racing?
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
You know, while I understand the frustration that Ms. Locke has, I truly do. I think if we're gonna have this conversation, it's inappropriate to have it without both sides being notified to be here and be able to discuss it.
This has nothing to do with...I'm sorry, with the owner. This is a violation.
Ma'am, I have a floor, excuse me.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'll listen to you as long as you want me to listen to you, but I'm not gonna let you interrupt me when I'm talking. Okay? So I think it might be a little inappropriate to have this without both sides there. But before we trigger some discussion that we're gonna have on any PUD, I think the PUD has to be written up that it's violated and that code enforcement has gone there, has run their course and done the things that they need to do. That's the process that we have built in place at this time in order to do that. So I think we need to...if there are violations attending, I've never been out there, so I don't know.
I know you are.
If there's violations occurring, then code enforcement needs to go out and look. And if they can, you know, agree that there's violations occurring, then they should write them up like they would any other code offender in the county. I don't know how to fix that process any better than just allowing it to take place.
And Mr. Turner, I agree with you, but I was told that codes enforcement does not enforce this PUD because of the hours of operation. So if the...I documented all this with photos, with a date-stamped camera myself. I did all codes enforcement's job to show codes enforcement the violations. I don't know what more that I can do as a citizen to try to get our issues resolved. You know, it's like he's mud bogging outside what the state permitted him to mud bog. So, you know, he's...they're all mud bogging out there on wetlands now. So, I mean, these are serious issues to us. We live out there by it, so we're living it. And I don't know how we're supposed to resolve our issues. If the owner's not going to receive a notice of violation for something he's doing already, he's been doing it since 2015, that's outside what's allowed in the PUD, it's right on...you can go on YouTube and watch the whole stuff. I mean, it's there. So I don't understand how we're supposed to resolve our issues. If the county's not gonna do their part or enforce this PUD, we're never going to get any of our issues resolved.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls, I think you had another comment?
I guess one question that comes to my mind is, and the reason I ask, if motorcycles were precluded, trail riding, I would think would include motorcycles. And as a person that used to ride the trails on a motorcycle and on a four-wheeler, I wouldn't make the difference myself. I would think that a motorcycle on a trail and a four-wheeler on a trail is the same thing.
I understand, Mr. Rawls, but they're racing seventy-five feet near abutting property owners and surrounding neighbors. If you're racing and you're using the track and the trails as a racing surface, then the Putnam County Land Development Code said that setback has to be five-hundred feet or more. It's seventy-five feet. So you've got hundreds of people out there racing seventy-five feet from the abutting property owners and surrounding neighbors, and that's not in compliance with the Putnam County Land Development Code.
Okay, so I'll be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the land development code, so I'll-
So we're having to listen to this noise.
Refer that to Mr. Brown.
It's not even in the PUD. I mean, it makes no sense at all, and we can't get any...we just don't know what to do.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Going back since four years ago when I got here, we've heard this quite a bit. I can tell you that our codes enforcement has been out there after hours to take a look at things. I don't have the file in front of me, Ms. Locke. I can't give you the dates and times. But we've talked about this in workshops. We've had codes enforcement there. We've had the planner there. Mr. Alford has been involved in trying to negotiate the setbacks and things. So this PUD has been growing legs for a long time. And...but I agree, I don't think that we should be going this far down the rabbit hole without all parties involved being here. And I agree with Commissioner Turner that it's not fair for that to take place. Usually, we hear public comments and don't get down in the weeds. Today, we're choosing to have a little debate. But I just wanted to set the record straight that codes enforcement has been out there after hours and on holidays to see if they comply with the PUD. And if they don't, then I'm sure that there are...if we read the PUD today, that there would be avenues that Mr. Alford has been contacted and gone from there. And thank you for the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Locke, we will look into it.
They can continue to motocross race in March, okay?
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Linda Osborne.
Linda Osborne, two-fifty-five Ashley Lake Drive, Melrose. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pickens, the other commissioners. I have lived in Ashley Lake now for thirty-two years, and I have driven over a washboardy, sandy, dusty, dirt road. And to the thanks of your votes, and particularly Mr. Harvey, we are getting Ashley Lake Drive paved. So no more dusty, dirt, muddy roads. And thank you very much for your consideration, and thanks for all the votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think Ashley Lake has been the source of my gray hair in the past four and a half years. I did get a complaint yesterday that it's gonna be speeders are coming now. So, you know, that's gonna be the next round that's gonna happen, but I'm sure our fine law enforcement can handle that.
Speed bumps.
But I'll be glad to be turning that process over to them, you know. It's been...this board has worked diligently with the state of Florida in that subdivision to get that road done. And I want to give kudos to our public works department, who have been so creative in trying to get this thing done. It's just been a long time coming. But here's the point, when you ask somebody else to pay the bill, you follow their rules. And that's what happened in this case. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And I'll add, I've never been to Ashley Lake, but I'm gonna go there because I think I heard about it in my first transportation meeting two years ago. So it's been an ongoing project, so hopefully it'll get finished soon. So thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Ms. Brenda Chamberlain.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brenda Chamberlain, and I am a staff member of United Way of North Central Florida. We are the lead agency for the continuum of care...that's a tongue twister...that covers all five counties, Alachua, Bradford, Levy, Gilchrist, and Putnam. While this United Way doesn't cover services for Putnam County, we do cover it as the lead agency. I just wanted to clarify that with the United Way. I'm here today to make you aware that the point in time that counts the homeless is coming up this month. It happens every year in the last ten days of January. The continuum of care is picked January twenty-third is the day that we're going to do this count. And so what that means is we're gonna have volunteers coming out into all five of our counties and going into known areas to where encampments are, camps, downtown streets, churches, just the known areas of where the homeless are and counting them. We have worked with the sheriff's department. We are working with the Palaca Police Department and to the local service providers that serve this area. We will probably have about thirty volunteers just going out into Putnam County alone to try to locate the homeless. What this does for Putnam County is it allows the continuum of care to let HUD know how much homeless is in the area and what the need is. We, as the lead agency, apply for funding through HUD, and part of that funding comes into Putnam County. So the better numbers that we are able to get each year and show the need, the more money that we can help bring into Putnam County. If you have any questions, I am more than happy to meet with anyone or answer any questions that you have on this.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. When you count the homeless, I will make a suggestion that you go through our codes enforcement. We are finding encampments all around, and those are being turned into codes enforcement. So work with Mr. Seoffea back there in the back. He'll wave his hand at you, and he can get you some of those lists of where some people are encamped at. But my question is this, when the money comes back to Putnam County, what does it really benefit the homeless people? How do we move them from homelessness to home?
Okay.
And that's my question.
That is a very good question. The way that the money comes into Putnam County is it comes in through rapid rehousing dollars. The agencies that get that money right now is Catholic Charities. We also work with the domestic violence shelter here in Palaca, and they also get money to help shelter women and children.
So does that put homeless people in homes? Yes, Catholic Charities would be the-
Catholic Charities. Rapid rehousing funding is a short-term solution to help people get back into housing. It helps...three months is roughly about the normal time, but it can help someone up to two years. And it helps with security deposit. It helps with the rent. It helps with sometimes utilities, sometimes not. It just depends on how the contract is written. And it helps with case management. That's a key component to the program, is case management to help folks not return to homelessness, help someone with financial needs. It helps them figure out how to be financially stable and to help them, help their families learn how not to reciprocate.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Rawls?
Do you have any statistics from, like, 2017, 2018 that you can share with us?
I sure do. For overall, for all five counties for 2018, there were seven-hundred-and-fifty-six. For overall, for all five counties, for 2018, there were 756. For Putnam, total, there was 56. Now, that includes the shelter folks that were in the domestic violence shelter, but also it includes the five-bed emergency shelter, that's the Simmons House, and the five beds that are transitional that they have. It includes the numbers of 70 folks from their jail. And the numbers that it does not include, because the school board has different definitions of homelessness, is there was 532 folks that were homeless and that the school board recognized.
In Putnam County?
In Putnam County.
And what, dollar-wise, how does, what does that equate to?
I don't have funding, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I guess the results of your surveys of the county will receive that information?
Yes, sir, I'll be more than happy to bring it back.
Okay.
I'm going to be honest and say it takes us a little while because we have to de-duplicate and crunch numbers and stuff, but I'll be more than happy to come back. It'll be probably about March or April that I bring the information back to you.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Larry Bowling.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
This will be brief, actually. I am a property owner out in the metropolis of Botswick, and I represent 24 other parcel owners. We're hoping to get five to 10-minute block before the Board of Commissioners at the upcoming Transportation Committee meeting. And I know, Mr. Rawls, I got a letter out to Mr. Rawls and Press Tompkins, so they may have already acted on it, but we're hoping to get, again, just a small block of time at the upcoming workshop. I think, again, it's on the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, around 2:00. So we could present a case that the county would hopefully adopt by resolution, a small road called River Shores Road, which is one of the roads that these parcels are off of. It adjoins Eagle Creek, which is a county-owned and maintained road. Eagle, River Shores Road, the road in question, is county-owned, but it is not, has not been adopted by resolution and is not in the county maintenance program. And the homeowners out there, there are 14 parcels along the riverfront, and those homes pay a pretty significant chunk of change. And I realize the property assessment or property tax does not go to the Public Works Department, it's more funding sources from FDOT. But nevertheless, we'd like a small block of time just to raise the issue before the commissioners and ask to be, you know, have our day in the sunshine.
Okay, Press, is that, will that be on the agenda, or who's he need to see?
Yes, sir, it is on the agenda.
Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you, all.
We meet at 2:00 on that Tuesday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Larry.
Any other public comment? We'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. And I'd like to take time to recognize State Representative Bobby Payne's executive assistant, Ms. Leota Wilkinson, in the back, sitting by the Honorable Ed Kilbrough.
That's a stretch.
And also, also like to recognize Colonel Joe Wells, and if Joe could introduce the gentleman that's to his left.
I don't think he needs any introduction, but I am certainly glad to have Sheriff Deloche back with us in Putnam County. It's been a long time without him there by our side, but I'm also honored to, the fact that he entrusted me and the rest of our staff to leave us for a period of 12 weeks as he attended the exclusive FBI Executive Development Leadership Class in Quantico, Virginia, and is one of just a handful of law enforcement leaders across the country that can claim that. So we are certainly proud to have him back. I know that a lot of you had made comment that it would certainly probably be a little easier and slow down than when he got back, but I think that's going to be to the contrary because he brought back some phenomenal ideas and some ways to move forward. And we've actually already began looking at some realignment, reorganization of the agencies to run more proficiently based on some of the stuff that he picked up. So I, on behalf of all of the 300 and just north of 300 members of the Putnam County Sheriff's, also want to congratulate him and welcome him back, so Sheriff.
Welcome, Sheriff.
It is indeed a pleasure to be back in front of you as I welcome Commissioner Rawls and the rest of you into the new year. I think this is, well, this is my first commission meeting in almost five months, so it's a pleasure to be back in front of you. I had a wonderful time in Quantico, but it's always great to come back home, so I look forward to sharing each of you, or sharing with each of you my experiences that I had up there on a personal, one-on-one basis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Did you have to buy all new uniforms when you got back? Looked at me like you lost about a whole person while you was up there.
As luck would have it, I maintained in my closet a supply of uniforms from when my former self. And they've been just fine.
Welcome back, Sheriff.
It's great to be back.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Sheriff, I want to just say, welcome home, and it's good to have you back. But I want you to know that your department really didn't miss a beat, and that's a good thing for a leader to hear about their department. Colonel Wells was, anything we needed, he was there. Anything we needed from staff, they were there. And that's a great testament of a leader that can lead their agency, pursue better for their agency, and it doesn't miss a beat. And maybe it did, I didn't see it, but I tell you what, from what I saw, you didn't miss a beat, sir, and thank you. And Sheriff, you had great people working for you.
Well, I can tell you that, on a personal note, Joe and I enjoy a great relationship and a personal friendship, as well as a professional relationship. But I can tell you that had I not had complete confidence in Joe's and the rest of my leadership team ability to lead the agency, I would have never been able to take advantage of the opportunity to attend the FBI National Academy. And it's a testament to Joe and his leadership ability that I was able to go and participate in this program.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, since the sheriff was up here, I did, I was going to mention this in my comments, but it's more apropos with the discussion of the sheriff being back. We have a new judge that is starting, actually, right now, and I met with him last week, and I know that he met with the sheriff during that time. One of the items that he and I discussed was the possibility of establishing a Veterans' Court. And one of the key components of doing that is collecting veterans' data during discussions with deputies around, I won't say arrests because it may not be arrested, but in the past, we did not collect veteran information from those encounters with sheriffs. So the sheriff, according to the judge, Judge McGillan, has agreed to begin to look at ways in their process that they could collect veteran information so that we could identify potential participants that might be able to participate in that. Veterans Court, just like drug court, is not a court that is funded by the state legislature. Those dollars to fund those designer courts, as some people call them, like teen court, drug court, Veterans Court, have to find local funding sources to cover those costs. But the judge did commit to me that, because he works with the Veterans Court in St. Johns County for a number of years, that he was willing to talk with all of us about the possibility of looking at establishing some relationships. I don't want to throw anything out there to say how it's going to look, because it may be a hybrid of some type, where we may partner with other counties in their effort to share staff and resources to make that reality for Putnam County veterans, more a positive option, that they may be able to take advantage of that. So I know Doug McClure and his wife's here, and that's an issue that Doug is very passionate about. He and I have talked about that for years. And so I thought it was just a good opportunity, since he was here and the sheriff was back, and we had those conversations, to let you know that, because we will be coming back to you with whatever suggestions that this small group can put together for ways to make that happen. So to me, that's really great news for our county, for our veterans, and for our court system, so I wanted to share those. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move forward with the agenda. Next agenda item's number six, the consent agenda. Are there any items wished to be pulled by the commissioners? I'll start at my far left with Commissioner Harvey.
I have none, sir.
And Mr. Turner?
None.
And Mr. Rawls?
E.
Just for discussion. And Commissioner Goddard?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none. Commissioners, if it's okay, I would like to go ahead and approve the consent agenda minus I, and then we'll discuss, excuse me, E. We'll discuss E and then vote on it separately, if that's okay with the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of item E.
Second? Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda moves. Item E, Commissioner Rawls.
Just had a question, is this the same drone that we discussed last month, or is this, will be number four?
This is the purchase of the same drone that was discussed at the meeting last month during the absence.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move item E for approval on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda item E also passes. Before we, I want to take a break. Okay, before we move to item number seven, we'll take a five-minute break, we'll recess.
A low-interest loan, which is what we have right now. I don't have any problem looking at something like that. That's just good business to see if you think you can, as long as it makes sense. Um, I don't know that you could find less than three and a quarter right now, or whatever it is. But if you thought we could, then I would be absolutely willing to look to see if it would save this county some money. Um, it's just a pretty low interest rate in today's market, I believe. Um, the, uh, I know that, uh, when we decided to, uh, look at possibility of borrowing twenty million dollars to pave roads around the county, um, towards a better place, future better place monies, where we could go ahead and use them like you would mortgage a house. You could use the house while you were paying off the roads. Um, at that time, it just didn't work out. And the reason it didn't, and I think the biggest reason it didn't work out is because we would've had to hire outside people to help us administer that contract because we can't build any more roads, maybe a few, but we can't build twenty million more roads in a time period that we would've had to, to make that loan deal work out. And so I think that the commissioners in a, in a workshop stepped away from that several months ago. And that was the reason why, was because it, you just couldn't administer the contract, even though it may or may not have been a good deal with it and get all the way to the end. Just couldn't administer the contract. If you got to hire someone to come in and do it, then at that point, you may as well have just not done it at all because you haven't saved anything by, by doing that. So, uh, I think we walked away from it. So, I'm open to what you're saying, I really am. But I don't know that there is such a book of policies and procedures that would cover any event that comes along. Kind of, that's where it starts, I think, is someone from the public or one of the commissioners decides they want to look at something like you just mentioned. And then we take it from there and go and, um, and think if it needs to be changed or what have you. And all those are really good ideas to take a look at. Uh, you know, the jail or the interest rate on the jail or whatever. But I don't, I don't think we have enough money to pay it off any quicker. Um, and also the, uh, the East Palatka Sewer System over there, there's also a, a payment on it every year. Uh, I don't think we have the money to pay it off quicker. I wish we did, where we could make a big chunk, chunk payment on it and maybe lower our interest payments. But, you know, that was done before I got here, but it's something we've got to live with. I don't have any problem making the deal sweeter if we can by getting a lower interest rate or somewhere. I just think it would be very difficult to find an interest rate lower than that, what we're paying with USDA now, rural development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rawls?
Point of clarification. Number one, it was you at the meeting who said, um, a subcontractor attached copper to, um, galvanized. I didn't, I didn't bring that up on my own.
When it was built three years ago.
You never mentioned the valve. The, the comment was, um, that a, a contract, a subcontractor screwed up and used the, um, the wrong materials. So whether it was a valve or not, I, I, I'm not privy to that. Um, what happened was I went to Mr. Suggs and I asked him a question. I did not know that you were a partner in the deal when it was built. And my immediate reaction to him was, well, is this a conflict of interest? And he said, I don't know, that's up to you guys to decide. So this is what brings up the policies and procedures. As a general contractor, if there are latent defects on this jail, if there were latent defects that were installed three years ago, it doesn't matter if it's three years or ten years from now when they're discovered. They are latent defects. So I, I, you know, and this is where prudence dictates. I think that it would be prudent for us to have a citizens advisory committee, maybe that takes a look at the jail, the specifications that were built. When I asked Ms. Papel who our contract representative was, she said Bubba. And my initial reaction was, please tell me Bubba has a last name. And then I said, does Bubba have any relevant construction experience? Because if he was a construction manager for the county, maybe Bubba didn't know what he was doing and, and, and the county didn't get what we paid for. But, uh, in regards to financing, we sold bonds. My understanding is we sold bonds, correct, Ms. Papel? Okay, Ms. Frank, did we, did we not sell, oh, she's gone. We sold bonds and they were bought by the USDA, three point one two five percent. My point is that if there is that inverse, uh, relationship between stocks and bonds, and stocks are high right now, maybe bond rates are lower. And we can go back to the USDA and see if there's some way that they're willing to do something to reduce the interest rate. But we have a forty-year obligation. And, and in my opinion, um, I, I don't know how long that building's going to be there, but forty years just seems like an awfully long time to have to pay for a jail. That's all.
Mr. Chairman.
Tim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, uh, the finance department is always happy to, uh, review. We periodically do tests against, uh, existing loans to see what the market, uh, is predicting. If there's a request similar to what you want to make, we request that you, uh, either have the board or the county administrator, um, make that request for the group. Because, um, with limited staff, if you request something and then the other four request something, and we're all doing this and it's really not a, a, a decision that the board made that they want us to put that effort into, uh, then we get some conflicting, uh, guidance. And, uh, with, um, loans of these natures, um, they're a little more complicated than just, you know, like what I would get a mortgage at a one bank and they loan you the money. Uh, um, because bonds, uh, offer, um, tax incentives for, uh, the, the people that put the money up. Uh, part of that is that they know there's that commitment over that timeframe. And so, uh, it's not just as simple as saying, you know, look at, uh, you know, a standard and poor's spreadsheet today of what, uh, interest rates are and know that's what we could get. What you generally want to look at is what are interest rates trending to do? And, uh, interest rates in the, the standard interest rate world have been rising. Uh, but, uh, as you mentioned, bonds sometimes have inverse, uh, trends. Uh, so we would be glad to look at that, uh, but we would ask that it kind of be, uh, some kind of action that this board is asking us to do that review so that then we, we can track those requests. Uh, we put them in a, uh, timeline of our work process. And, uh, we put, we also assign, um, uh, an importance to it. Uh, so, uh, if some, something else comes along next week and it's higher, uh, importance to the commission to have an answer, sometimes things have to shift in that, uh, project list. So, uh, we would just ask that we try to get, um, serious inquiries like you have. And, and I certainly think that, uh, that's something we should look at. But we would ask that we get those kind of, uh, uh, requests for fairly detailed inquiry, uh, as a board request.
Again, this is a general discussion.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
I guess it was alluded to that there might be a conflict of interest because I worked for the county before I ever was a county commissioner. Um, I think that's the silliest thing I've ever heard, but okay, I'll address it. Um, since I've become a county commissioner, I've been given legal advice that I can still work for the county on any bid situation that comes along. I just can't vote on it.
Right.
Okay, so how that would make that a conflict, that I would did something for the county before I became a county commissioner, I fail to see the connection, but that's okay. Um, I guess, and my company has decided that we're not going to work for the county as long as I, as I'm a county commissioner. Because I don't personally feel like it would be, um, it would be the most, the best way to go for me. So, for our company. So, that doesn't mean I can't, and it doesn't mean that you can't or anybody else sits at this board can't. It just means that you can't vote on it. You can discuss it, you can do whatever you want, but you can't vote on it. That becomes a conflict for you or your children. So, being a conflict is ridiculous, uh, that, that I worked for the county before I was even a county commissioner. Um, the, uh, and I've done a lot more projects than the jail too. A lot more for the county, roofing and construction. So, uh, and we're not doing it right now on either company. Just because I don't want to take the heat that it may be a conflict, even though legally it is not a conflict. Um, so, the, uh, like I said earlier, everybody needs to understand that there's going to be some maintenance issues on whatever building is built and the, uh, and the, uh, the warranty that was written in the specifications was one year. They've come back and worked on it, they being the construction manager who came back and worked on it even after the year, uh, on some issues. Uh, up and beyond the, the call of what they had to legally do. So, the, uh, I agree with you, there could be some latent defects in any project that's ever done and that they carry on past the two years. But nothing I've seen so far has been classified as a latent defect. I can tell you that, but, so anyhow, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, have brought up rules and regulations like I mentioned before. And, and Mr. Manning's not here today, uh, so I'd like to bring that up at a later date. Just for your, uh, what I basically did is went out online and looked at, at kind of a roadmap. But it was quite lengthy and Mr. Manning has some notes in his file. But again, I, I'd rather not, um, I'd rather wait for Mr. Manning to be here to look at something like that. I didn't know what, exactly what Commissioner Rawls was going to talk about. So that's why I pulled those out and got with Tabitha about that. The other item is, uh, the jail interest. I was very active in moving the jail payment away from the sheriff's department back to the county commission. It is a county commission function and it's a building of the county commission, uh, either the port authority or the county commission, however you want to look at it. But at that point, it was very important that it doesn't come out of the sheriff's budget. Uh, the sheriff is the keeper of our building, but those are our buildings. And, uh, I was very adamant about that. I did bring up the fact that we, years ago, that we should look at a plan of paying down the interest of the jail. Because a forty-year note, what are we going to have in forty years? I mean, it's going to be, even with the best maintenance that we can have, are we going to have a product out there that, that's worth anything? And I, I think, Mr. Rawls, I think you're on the right path. I think we should ask these questions. I think we should talk about these. And, uh, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation, uh, with Mr. Smith. Uh, you know, and when this board decides, how can we accomplish that goal in mind? And I think that's important to better prepare our citizens because I can tell you, there's going to probably be another jail forty years from now. And we need to be preparing for those types of situations as they come. And probably none of us will be here about that time. But, you know, we surely want to leave Putnam County in better hands than when we found it. And not that it was in worse hands, I'm not saying that. I'm saying I think every day we should wake up with that goal in mind. And I think as servants, we do that. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
Commissioner Turner, what I said was that, um, th- this whole thing came out the, the, the clear blue. Um, there was a phone call to Mr. Suggs. He said, Mr. Commissioner, we have a problem, uh, at the jail, we're having new prisoners. I inquired at the workshop, um, what was going on because as a commissioner, this is our building. It belongs to the port authority, but I still represent that. Um, and the answer I got was that we had dismemberments and there was a problem. I didn't think a whole lot about it. It, it was about a week later when it really, um, set in. It was Mr. Suggs that brought to my attention that you were part of the, the, um, team that built the jail. You and Ajax Instruction had partnered up. My understanding, going way back when, was I thought you built just the medical building. I didn't know that you had anything to do with the jail. So this is not an attack on you personally, but what I told Mr. Suggs immediately was, I think that's a conflict of interest because, um, you have a stake in whether or not, if there's a latent defect, you're, you're on the hook as well, um, if, if there was a latent defect. And all I'm saying is, as a commissioner, I would like to have the opportunity to know if we have a problem with our, with a building that we, that we're funding for forty years, I would like to know what the issues are. I'm the only licensed general contractor that sits at this board right now. So, I, I can tell you, I might have, have an opinion about the way the place was built. Maybe I want to look at the specifications. Maybe we need to go back and take a look and see if we got what we want. I got an email from Mr. Hotelin last week that said, have you looked at the re, extra rebar in, um, jail doors that went into this thing for serving prisoners? And my answer to him was no. And he said, I'm going to, I'm going to pull up the documentation I got on my computer. I'm going to forward it to you. We had change orders because there was no slots in doors to feed prisoners. And apparently that costs us a bunch of money. And, you know, he, he's speculating it's over a hundred thousand dollars for each item. But, um, if this stuff has never been looked into, we need to. Um, and I, I understand that we don't need to go back in history a long ways. But at the same time, if we don't change the way we do business, we're going to repeat the way we, we just abuse the taxpayers' money. I'm not up here to abuse the taxpayers' money. I'm a fiduciary first, I have responsibility to our taxpayers, I take that very seriously. At one point, I'd asked Mr. Harvey if we're, if we have fiduciary insurance. Because I know that personally, I'm liable if I make a mistake and I get sued by the, by the taxpayers. I want to make sure that myself and my family don't have that issue in the future. Um, I, again, for clarity, Mr. Turner, um, this is not an assault on you. The, the issue came up at a workshop out of, you know, out of the clear blue. And questions, this is how my mind works. I just start asking myself questions. I'm a taxpayer first. As a taxpayer, I want to know, did I get my money's worth? If we're going to write a check for over a half a million dollars for interest and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for principal, am I getting my seven hundred thousand dollars worth, uh, a year out of that jail? That's all. And, and it's our responsibility to take care of that jail. And by the way, it belongs to the Putnam County Port Authority. So, okay.
Mr. Turner?
We, uh, when we started, a year ago, when I was, uh, young, young at being a county commissioner, we actually went to Congressman Yoho's office and asked him to approach USDA and ask for some forgiveness or, and ask for some loan forgiveness and also ask for some in, from interest rate forgiveness. Uh, we were not successful at it at that time. Uh, main ring being, amazing, main reason being is if they gave it to us, they'd have to give it to every other small community in the country that USDA has loaned money to. And there's literally thousands of them. And so, the program that they use is low interest. When somebody pays it back, they take that money and they loan it to somebody else at a lower interest rate than what you could usually get from a bank. Um, as far as the, uh, change orders on the jail, I'm not going to sit here and, and debate that with anybody here. If you think Rick Leary let any dime pass through this county's hands without a thorough investigation, you, that's ridiculous. Um, he's the tightest fellow I ever saw, uh, when it came to that. Um, if he was still here, I could actually ask him to go through all the, excuse this, but all the hell that we caught when we tried, when we spent an extra dime. And yeah, there were some things left out. But as you noted earlier, Commissioner Rawls, um, you're a contractor too. If you've ever built a project without having a change order on it, I'd like to know what it was because I've never done it in my thirty-five years.
I, I have, but it's, they were designed, built, so, yeah.
Anyhow, uh, there are going to be some things. But also, most of all the change orders and most of all the contingencies were paid for within budget. That project did not go over budget one cent. We found a way to pay for it, including when we had to inject cement in the ground to stabilize the soil underneath that was never in the original contract. It cost three hundred thousand dollars. We found the money in the contract to do that too. No additional funds. So, anybody that thinks that, that a change order costs the county money outside of the contract is not being accurate because it didn't. We brought it in within the budgeted amount. Um, and, uh, within the contractor's contingency and the budgeted amount. And I'll tell you, it cost Ajax some money to do that, uh, to keep from charging the extra funds. Uh, also, at the time, Jeff Hardy was, um, was the sheriff. And they had a fund, and I wish I knew the name of it, I'm not sure, but they had some security upgrades they wanted to do. The sheriff paid for that within the fund, that particular fund that the sheriff's office has. I don't know what it is, some kind of a fund that they have that prisoners put money in or something that's, that's not controlled by the county commission. It's controlled, uh, controlled by the sheriff's department. So they actually paid for some security upgrades. Keep in mind that in the security business, it's kind of like the computer business. You can design one today and by the time you get through the government and the red tape to get it built or to buy it, uh, it's, it's obsolete. So, the security system they had out there wasn't obsolete, but it was not cutting edge. Um, just so anyhow, the, over that period of time. So, I'm not exactly how we got from a procedures and policies and how we address public business to having a discussion on how and who built the jail a few years ago. But I guess that's fine. Um, the, uh, is this something we're going to take on to workshop? Or we just going to sit here and discuss all day long things that we can't do anything about?
Mr. Chairman, if I can address that?
Okay.
That will certainly be the pleasure to board the county commissioners. If you'd like to continue this discussion in the workshop, we can certainly advertise a workshop and put this item of discussion on there. And, uh, you know, there's been a lot of conversation here today about, uh, about comments from the county administrator. Anytime anybody would like to sit with the county administrator one-on-one, I'll be more than happy to share that conversation with each of you. Uh, I don't think this is the appropriate time nor the place to get into that. Uh, but we will certainly schedule a workshop if, if my five elected officials would like to do so to continue this conversation.
Does everybody agree with me to move this to workshop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got no problem?
All right, okay. Any other comments? Okay, I just, for one, uh, appreciate Commissioner Rawls for your, your energy and, and your ideas and, um, and the effort you're putting forth, um, as a good commissioner. So, uh, we'll move on to, uh, comments. Uh, Mr. Tim Smith, clerk of court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share that last night I had the distinct pleasure of swearing in the new, uh, commissioners for the city of Palatka. Um, Mayor Hill, Commissioner Campbell, and Commissioner Rufus Borum had the, uh, swearing-in ceremony at the Laramie Arts Center. It was very nice. Uh, they also talked, they had a nice resolution that talked about the history of Palatka, uh, its importance to the development of the state of Florida and also, um, promoting, uh, the future, uh, that the city and the county together are moving forward. And it was just a great event and I appreciated the opportunity to swear, uh, them in, not at them. Swear them in, that's one of the things that my job allows me to do is to administer oaths. Uh, I also have the pleasure to go tonight to Pomona Park and, uh, perform the same type of swearing-in ceremony for their new commission. And, uh, those are always, uh, real blessings to me and my life and my professional career, uh, to be able to be part of that. Uh, today at noon, I'm going to be the speaker at the Rotary Club. Uh, I'm going to be talking about the importance of record preservation and, uh, how we manage those in the county. So, I probably shouldn't have said that because now Gator and Joe and, uh, Matt and Terry are probably not coming. So, uh, but anyway.
You can find them when you get there.
As I, we heard him talking up today. Yeah. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to share those things and, uh, uh, to tell you that it's, uh, uh, my distinct pleasure to serve as your comptroller, your clerk, your, uh, county recorder, uh, and keeper of the record for the county. And thank you for allowing me to have some comments. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, we'll move forward to item number nine, appointments. Are there any other appointments, um, that any of commissioners have?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Turner.
On District Three, where ZBOA, Faye Davis resigned, I'd like to, uh, to appoint Jerry, Jerry L. Sims.
That be AKA Less? That be AKA Less?
That be AKA Less, yeah. That's all I have for the day, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none. I'm having a hard time finding people that want to serve on some of these. But we'll bring that up later and I'll keep trying my best, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes. Uh, on Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, Talbot Driggers would like to continue. So I'd like to re, reappoint him. And, uh, also Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Terry Driggers also would like to continue.
Okay.
And so I'd like to employ him also.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
I don't have any. There's nothing here for me.
Okay, all right. And I have on the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, um, for District One, Mr. Beau Brewer. I'd like to nominate him again to, for a four-year term.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey?
Um, at the last county commission meeting we had in December, we mentioned, uh, my new responsibilities with the Florida Association of Counties Trust. And I asked if we could, if I could be removed from the Parks and Recreation. Um, we need a commissioner to, to chair that, um, committee. So, uh...
I, I, as the chairman, I believe that, you know, you took on the extra responsibilities and I just think you have an extra responsibility. So moved.
There you go, well.
We appreciate everything you do. Um, if it's a pleasure of the board, um, and I, I would like to take over the chairmanship of the Recreation Board.
Good, I think that would be a great move, sir.
Okay, do we, uh, do we have to vote on that or?
I think we can just vote.
Well, you think we're not going to let you do it?
Just trying to follow procedure here. So, okay, yeah, I'll take that. Was there another one that you wanted to, you wanted to get off of? We can discuss that.
Well, the Public Safety Coordinating Council needs, uh, that's your appointment, if I'm not mistaken.
We're going to discuss that at the workshop today, uh, and some of these other appointments, so. Administrator Suggs?
Yes, sir. Uh, last month, there was a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Chase Barnes to the ZBOA. Uh, I had met with Mr., uh, with Mr. Barnes as recent as yesterday. Uh, Mr. Barnes, uh, offered his verbal resignation from the ZBOA. He, uh, has, uh, uh, I believe, accepted a new position within his corporate world and his schedule now won't permit him to be able to. It's, it's more demanding time on this time now. But he was extremely grateful for the opportunity and wanted to make sure that, uh, uh, he did what was best for, uh, not only, uh, Putnam County, but for the folks on the ZBOA.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do we need to vote on that resignation or?
I believe you can just accept it.
We're just accept it, okay, we'll accept the resignation. Uh, Commissioner Turner?
Um, was he the at-large member on ZBOA or was he a district appointee?
I believe he was an at-large.
At-large? In that case, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate for that position, the at-large position of Mr. Eddie Collins.
Okay.
I second that.
We have a proper motion, um, to nominate Eddie Collins, um, by Commissioner Turner. And we have a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Mr. Harvey? Okay.
Harvey?
Harvey. Uh, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I think we do need to vote on you as Parks and Recreation Commissioner. So I make a motion that you, uh, chair the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, uh, second by Commissioner Rawls. Is any discussion? Angie, is that okay with you? Okay, all right. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. It passes.
And for the record, Angie gave a thumbs up, so that was a good.
Okay, comments, um, county administrator?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, I think I'm good today, thank you.
Okay. Matt, you want to make any comments for Stacy Manning?
Sir.
All right, commissioner comments, uh, I'll start to my immediate right with Commissioner Goddard.
Caught me off guard. I just want to say, I hope everyone had a good Christmas and New Year's. I had a blast with my fellow commissioners throwing out candy at these parades. It was, uh, definitely interesting.
Tossing, not throwing.
Tossing, tossing, yes, gently, gently. Except for Larry Harvey, who, uh, sometimes not so gentle if you say anything derogatory to him. But, uh, yeah, Bill and I, we went through, uh, good gosh, what, four bags of candy?
Four bags of candy.
And just one, 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 one pass there. The other thing I want to do is commend the staff. Um, we've had kind of a lull for the holidays, our, uh, and... But as far as commissioners, I don't know about all commissioners, some of us got even more calls than the rest. But staff was there and answered all of my questions anyway. Anything that I had, they were always available, they took... They took care of things immediately. I was, I was very impressed, very impressed, impressed with the time, impressed with the things that got done, which even goes back to poor old press, who I'd probably bother more than anybody else on these roads. But I take the time to go out and drive our roads, especially after a storm, to see what's happening. And not all of them, most of them held up very well. I will say, we've got nine hundred miles of dirt roads. All dirt roads are bad. Some are worse, but they're all bad. Every last one of them are bad, and we know that. There's, that's just a characteristic of it. But most of them were very good. I thought the drainage was doing very well for having ditches that were actually still full of water. The water's not going anywhere. It has nowhere to go. The other I want to bring up, down in Pomona, this Friday at four o'clock is their Arbor Day. They're giving away trees. They're going to have a nice presentation at the community center down there. So, that's going to be at Pomona Park at four o'clock this Friday. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
I attended the Better Place Plan Committee meeting last month. There was, in my opinion, quite a bit of confusion. There was a lot of new committee members. I think, if I remember correctly, six of the eight people that attended didn't really know what, they didn't have a sense of direction. And one of the requests that came out of that meeting was the possibility of having a joint meeting between the B.O.C.C. and the Better Place Plan members, so we could all get together and kind of give them a path forward as to what our expectations are of them. There was an article in Brevard, Brevard County was written up. It was, it wasn't Florida Trend Magazine, it's an online version of that, regarding Brevard County and how they had shifted five people on their tourist development committee, and what a change it made in the direction of their county. But what really jumped off the page at me was not the headline and what the article was about, but it was one sentence that said that this committee was one of fifty-four committees that are citizens-driven. So, I would encourage this commission to think about using citizens in a more useful manner as we go forward with these policies and procedures, conversations, to include the citizens and actually have useful committees that we can use like they're doing, because even though they are the space coast, they have a lot of tourism, they really seem to be doing some great things, and I think it would benefit us. And then the other thing is, I'm getting bombarded by people, phone calls and emails about nighttime meetings. So, I ran on it, and I'm definitely for it. Something that we needed to discuss sooner than later. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to thank our staff and our citizens for allowing us to have a great Christmas and a wonderful New Year. Yes, we still worked, and the staff still worked. And they were very attentive, and you're correct, Commissioner Goddard. Even though with a skeleton staff, they did the best they could, in all sincerity. Do want to bring Mr. Rawlings out at Swan Lake, wrote a very excellent letter to you, Mr. Siafi, thanking you for the job that your department did. If you haven't been out to Swan Lake and saw Mr. Rawlings' operation out there and the church ministry, I would encourage all of you to call him and schedule time. But Mr. Siafi, he gave your department just glowing reviews on how you bent over backwards to help him meet deadlines and even exceed those expectations. And I want to thank you publicly, because, you know, we hear about the bad things, but the good things are few and far between, and when we get those, we need to celebrate that. So, and not everything's bad in this county, and not everything's bad in the building department. Mary Lynn McGibben and Ronnie and Betty Carnes are in the audience. Mary Lynn's not here, but they are. And they are instigating, instigating? No. Resurrecting the Flora Home Park out there. And they've done a tremendously good job. And if you don't know about Flora Home Park, it's four parks that's split by Highway 100. And they are just breathed some really good life in. Angie has been very instrumental in helping, and I think Commissioner Rawls, you've been instrumental in some things that are going on. This commission has partnered with other agencies and really saw a breath of fresh air going on out there. But I say that to say that Home Depot's going to be out there this week, and they're going to be doing some work out there. So, commissioners, if you get an opportunity, write out there and see. I'm going to copy this for public records, Sarah, for our, this is not a scientific data spreadsheet, but it was a teacher, a library teacher at Inlocken High School, Mrs. Marie Railing. Most, some of you might know her. But she put together, she's been tracking rainfall since 1986. And Tim Diggan, from my understanding, would call her to find out the rainfall totals in the west end of the county. And I'm telling you, spreadsheet guy, I love it. But even more, let me say this, in 2017, she's reported ninety-three point four inches of rain that happened in the west Putnam area. This year, 2018, there was seventy-five point three five. Over the, from 1986, last year, 2017, was the largest year, and we had hurricanes then. And then this year was number four. So, that will tell you how much rain. And when we talk drainage, we should just say, here's the spreadsheet, take a look at it. There truly is no place for this water to go. And if you looked at my Facebook page, I try not to put anything out there, because it starts a firestorm of comments. But there's an elevation map that I placed on it. And if you ever get bored at two o'clock in the morning, and you have nothing to do, that's when I kind of get on the computer and look at the elevations. And from Flora Home, or actually Grandin, all the way through, I think we start at ninety-eight point five feet at 315 and 100. And by the time it gets to the reservoir, it's sixteen feet above sea level. That's a heck of a drop. I mean, eighty feet in difference. Corps of Engineers knew where to put that reservoir at. And St. John's River is sea level. So, don't get confused of why that water's important for Putnam County. You've got saltwater intrusion in the river, but we don't have saltwater intrusion in that reservoir. And I told Roger Reader with Channel 12 years ago, "I can drink out of the reservoir, I can drink out of spillway, if you promise to drink off the Jacksonville Landing." And he said, "I can't drink that water. It's our water." And water's what we're about. And right now, our lakes are full, our rivers are full, drainage is not going anywhere fast at this point.
Ditches are full.
It is what it is. But thank God that we've gotten rainfalls in the amount we've got. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Goddard has a comment?
No, I'd like, Commissioner Harvey, if you would elaborate on Swan Lake, yes, of what its function is, where it's at. I mean, we gave kudos here, but I don't think everyone knows exactly what kind of a gem we have sitting out there, and I'd like you to...
Swan Lake is one of those really rare gems in the county, and thank you, Mr. Goddard, for saying that. It is sitting on Highway, State Road, what's Highway? State Road 26. Going off of State Road 100 there in Putnam Hall, just go up there and turn to your left. They own property on both sides. But this place has been in existence for many, many years, serving the ministry of people around our nation and our world. And honestly, there's some, there's big pavilions there, you can have functions there. But just go out there and look at what Mr. Rawlings and his staff does. His son is a county commissioner in Clay County, Mr. Gavin Rawlings, who's a dear friend of mine. But I really encourage you, if you've got some time, give Mr. Rawlings a call, and I'll provide the number and go out there and see what he, see what they've done over the years. It's well worth your time to drive out there, and then go into Melrose and have lunch at some of the fine restaurants, and get your hair cut down there, too. They got great hair barbers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Commissioner Turner?
I just wanted to say that I think it was real nice today to get to see the youth of our community, who has done so well on a national stage, to come before us again. I'm with Commissioner Harvey. I've had the opportunity to see them guys several times, perform their recitation like they did today. And every time, it gets better and better and better, and it's still interesting. So, I'm glad they came for us today. And again, I'd like to congratulate them for another time. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll link us to the floor.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to comment on the presentation today. I also attended their fundraiser with Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Turner, and it was impressive. And to see the positive things that these young people are doing, and they'll take these skills with them for the rest of their life. Definitely want to welcome back Sheriff Deloche. We definitely missed you. I know your family missed you. And thank you for taking that on for that extensive training. I'm sure it'll benefit Putnam County. I'd also like to mention a commissioner in Crescent City, Marcus Hardy, sits on the town council in Crescent City and has for the last couple of years. He's come down with, if I pronounce this correctly, Guillain-Barre syndrome. And Marcus has some paralysis, and it's going to be a very long rehab process. Marcus is probably about forty-five years old, and just a very active person in Crescent City, and just an asset. So, if you would keep Marcus Hardy and Kim, his wife, in your prayers, he's got a long road to recovery. But they do feel positive that he should recover, but it's just going to be a long, drawn-out process. So, that's all I have. Is there any business to come before, any more business? We have a two o'clock workshop. We stand adjourned.